It's 3:31 PM on December the 4th, 2024. This regular session of the Caddo Parish Commission is now in order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Crackman, Commissioner Greg Young, Commissioner Thomas. By the way, he did call and say he's on, he's just outside the door. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Cothran. Commissioner Lazarus and Commissioner Epperson.
Yes.
Okay, you have 10 of 12 commissioners present, and that does constitute a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to ask Commissioner Gregory Young for an invocation. Is that all right with you, Commissioner? And I would like for Commissioner Atkins to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
The Lord, we thank you once again for allowing us to get together in your wonderful name and your wonderful presence. God, this may be the last time that all of us meet together at this place this year. And, Lord, we thank you for all that you've done for us this year and the way that we've been able to proceed and do the work that you have designed for us to do and do it together in your wonderful name. Amen.
Please join me in facing the flag. First responders and military veterans may render a hand-to-brow salute. All others, your hand over your heart. And please let's remember that POWs and MIA's.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners Gregory Young and John Atkins. Do we have any agenda additions, Mr. Clerk?
We do not.
Great. Do we have some citizens' comments?
Yes.
Okay, so our first citizen's comment today is from Dorita Grigsby. Ms. Grigsby. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dorita Grigsby. Today, I'm here to, to ask the commissioners that we want to be able to come, become up a new year of 2025, that we want to ask you to change the times. The reason why? Because a lot of our working families are at work and not able to attend the meetings. And we want, you guys always say that you want to hear from the public, and that's the way you're going to be able to hear from the public if you change your times to at least the 5:00, 5:30, when people start getting off work and then they can come and voice their opinion. And I appreciate it, and you guys have a happy new year, and hopefully you'll be able to get this changed. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy new year to you. Our next, our next comment is from Kimberly Jones. Kimberly Jones. Welcome, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon, and it's Kimberlay, and a lot of people on the board know how to pronounce my name, Kimberlay. My address is 11893 Providence Road, Shreveport, 71129. I'm pigging back on what Ms. Dorita has stated about the change, the change in times so that we can have more other people from the community here. And if you do change the times, trust me, we will get them here. And not only here, but we want them to be able to voice their concerns with the Caddo Parish Commissioner, and we want to make sure our communities are educated and engaged in what's going on with the community. So that is something that we're asking again, if the time can be changed a little bit later so that we have more people in the community able to attend the meetings on a regular basis and not just attend, but also to be engaged. Thank you. Oh, and again, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, Ms. Jones. Okay, that's all our citizens' comments. There are no visitors today. That brings us to regular session minutes adoption. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Cothran. Any discussion, Commissioner Jones?
No, sir.
We can vote.
Commissioner Greg, there we go. Thank you. And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent, bringing us to special resolutions where you have three items to consider today. The first is adopting a special resolution of recognition for incoming tax assessor, Regina Webb.
Commissioner Jones has a motion, second by Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to a global and adopt 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
All right. Any further discussion? We can vote.
And Commissioner Epperson, it looks like it hasn't, it didn't touch your vote. Thank you. That passes with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent.
I believe we're going to present 8.2 today, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we presenting any others today? Just that one? All right, let's stand for the reading of the special resolution in remembrance of our friend Lynn Nelson Stevens.
And I know there's a number of people here to accept on her behalf today.
Yes, and if you're here to accept this resolution on behalf of Lynn Stevens, please feel free to come forward to the podium.
All right, and as they make their way, I will begin reading it into the record. This is a special resolution of remembrance honoring the life and legacy of Lynn Nelson Stevens, and it reads, "Whereas it is with profound sadness that the Caddo Parish Commission records the passing of Lynn Amber Nelson Stevens, a tireless advocate, community leader, and devoted wife, mother, sister, and friend, whose impact on Northwest Louisiana will endure as a testament to her remarkable life of service and her extraordinary heart for helping others, dedication to serving her community and those in need, and embodying the values of compassion, resilience, and determination. And whereas Lynn was a devoted wife to Aaron Stevens for 33 years, a loving mother to Caitlin and Colin Stevens, and a cherished family member and friend whose love extended to her service dog Liesl and her rescue pets Chewy and Panda. And whereas after moving to the Shreveport-Bosier area in 2007, Lynn immersed herself in the community, contributing her time and talents to countless organizations, including the Norrellla Boy Scout Troop 64, Susler Roy Griggs School of Business, the Caddo Parish School Board's Family and Community Advisory Council, the Quota Club of Shreveport, the Rotary Club of Bossier City, Hope for the Homeless, and the Bossier Chamber of Commerce. And as a leader in the nonprofit sector, Lynn raised over $55 million to support critical programs and initiatives, and her leadership was instrumental in expanding services for domestic violence survivors, restoring 2-1-1 services in Northwest Louisiana, and supporting successful reentry programs for high-risk individuals through her role at Goodwill Industries of North Louisiana. And whereas Lynn's advocacy extended to addressing systemic issues such as racial injustice and poverty, and her dedication to the Alice Report inspired important dialogues with public officials and community leaders on how to better serve working families in need. And whereas despite living with FSH muscular dystrophy and facing immense personal challenges, Lynn became a powerful advocate for disability rights, serving on the Louisiana Rehabilitation Council, where she was appointed by Governor John Bell Edwards and later named President of the Board by Governor Jeff Landry. And whereas Lynn's zest for life, passion for hockey, and adventurous spirit inspired everyone around her, and her contributions to special projects like the North Webster Community Center stand as enduring legacies of her vision and determination. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission that it does hereby extend its deepest condolences to Lynn's family, friends, and the countless community members whose lives were enriched by her compassion and selflessness, and it honors and celebrates the life and legacy of Lynn Nelson Stevens, expressing its profound gratitude for her extraordinary service to the community and acknowledging the lasting impact of her work on the lives of countless individuals. Signed by all members of the Caddo Parish Commission."
Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Tillman, the Community Relations and Marketing Specialist for Goodwill Industries of North Louisiana, and on behalf of our CEO, David Tinkus, we would like to thank y'all for doing this for Lynn. Lynn was a light. Lynn raised so much money for our community, and she will be missed by so many. And so we just hope that we can continue in the footsteps that, in the path that Lynn created for nonprofits and for being a volunteer and also for being a light in our Shreveport-Bosier community. Once again, we would like to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Cothran?
Yes, I would just like to say, I had the opportunity to attend Lynn's homegoing, and the thing is, as I looked at the program, I had no earthly idea that she had accomplished as much as she had in the time that she was here. And in saying that, my condolences, of course, goes to the family and the entire Goodwill family as well. So I would definitely be keeping you all in my prayers to go forward.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say it is indeed an honor for us to better remember Lynn here today. Throughout my years of working in the community, I've always called on Darlene and Lynn with crazy ideas, and they've always been so supportive, and whatever I pitch to Darlene, Lynn just says, "Okay, it's fine," and it's always been a relief, but she's definitely someone that's going to be remembered. She's definitely contributed a lot to our community, and I know that her mark is going to be missed at Goodwill, but I know that you all will carry on her calls and her fights. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I've known Lynn for some time. Matter of fact, we worked on the same floor with Willis Knight, now at Willis Knight and Building, 820 Jordan. I believe I first met her at Community Foundation. It seemed like that's where she raised, either it was Community Foundation or United Way, one of the two, United Way. And, and I have never seen anyone with the type of energy, and I don't think the word handicap ever entered her mind because there was nothing handicapped about Lynn. And she was such a great resource for the community and has done so much, so she would definitely be sorely missed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Epperson?
I just wanted to state that I also met Lynn through numerous occasions in her work at Goodwill, and the last occasion I had to meet her in person, she and her mother came out to the Pine's Road Area Business Association meeting when we were getting ready to schedule our job fair. And it was a very nice cordial meeting. Her mother was so nice, and Lynn has always been so nice. And she's, she had always responded to basically any request once you called her. She'd never come up and say, "Well, I can't do this," or "I would do that." She'd just say, "Okay, we'll get it done." So we're going to remember Lynn, and certainly going to remember her mom and keep her in my prayers also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson. I think I speak for everyone on the commission and most people in Caddo Parish, everyone, and certainly who knew Lynn Stevens, that she was a ray of light. And every time she came here, it was a positive and hopeful event, sharing great numbers of all the fantastic work that she had done through Goodwill, and nobody could believe how positive and accomplished it was. Every, every time she came, it was a new fantastic accomplishment. So we, we'll miss her. All right. Shall we move on in the agenda?
If there, if it is appropriate, we'll move forward to communiquees and committee reports.
So next up is communiquees. Let's start with our administration response from Administrator Bryant.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just wanted to notify you that we did receive the second opioid monies. It was 1.7 million, so we'll start the process to determine how to use those funds. Again, they have to be used for opioid treatment.
Is that, is that more than last year?
I think it's slightly less, a little less than last year's, which is what...
1.7 million this year? I thought it was 1.1 last year. Okay.
1.9.
Oh, okay, great. Fantastic. Commissioner Epperson? I think, is your report, your response is done? Yes. So communiquees now.
War on litter and trash. Ms. King, could you pull up the, the photos on the trash? And that's at, that's in the 7300 block of Kimberley, about, where was that, Mr. Weaver?
Shirley Francis.
Shirley Francis. Just wanted you all to see that while we are declaring a war on litter in Caddo Parish. And just to kind of go in conjunction with something we have on the agenda today about the constables, I think it's salaries that we're looking at increasing? And then what about the stipulation that they are supposed to check on the trash and try to go through it and see if they can find tickets? Is that included in that?
I believe they're separate, parallel ordinance.
But is that in place or has that ordinance been in place?
That's been, that's in place. We're still just working, trying to get the CEAs with the different constables.
Well, that's a question I had. How, how has the council that's taken it? Are they willing to do that? Are they willing to go through the trash?
They are willing. We're just working out the, the agreement and the process for payments.
Okay, if you go through it, scroll down the way you see our, our cart that says litter pickup is in place, and I was just wondering, when we see things of this nature and our people have to pick it up, should they contact the constable and tell the constable, "This is what we have here," and they should come out and start examining the trash before they pick it up? What's, what would the process be?
The process is we're compensating them for a minimum, I think, four hours or a minimum number of hours a month in order to issue citations related to litter.
Right. If we see something of this nature, we ought to call them and that will institute their investigation into it?
You can call them, but they're, they're working the areas without phone calls. They are looking for areas to sign.
If they see it first, they will, they will notify our, for the Works Department, but they will go through what they are supposed to do.
No, they're just, they can notify, but they're just doing the citations to cite people if they can determine who did the, who put that.
I just want to make sure that, you know what I mean? If we identify it first, that they maybe need to call the constable and say, "Hey, here's some stuff before we start picking it up," and vice versa, the constable go out and see it, and he, he'll alert our people because our people may not be aware of it.
Yes, sir.
A citizen sent, sent that to me, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we were wanting to be working on, on that. Of course, we all have dual constituents, and the old hollow dome that's located on Financial Plaza, just east of Pine's Road, I know it's in the city. I've contacted Councilwoman Bowman and I think the appropriate authorities. So I was wondering if our people could also get with someone relative to that, that place need to be demolished or whatever it is. I drove through the other day, the citizens complained about it. The homeowners still getting into it, it's been boarded up. I think a file was there at one point in time. Now, even though that's located in the city, now, we get property taxes on that particular structure also, right?
Yes, sir.
Therefore, I would think that we have some kind of interest on finding out who's owning that, whereas we can get rid of it, get it back on the roads or whatever, put it up for sheriff sales or whatever it is so we can get it back on the road because it is definitely an eyesore. Within that particular area from Pine's Road to, to Buncombe Road, we have six nice hotels, and that is absolutely deplorable for that area.
Yes, sir. It is an eyesore.
See if we can get together with somebody and see if we can get, get that rectified.
Yes, sir.
Did we budget anything in the 2024 budget for the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana?
We have, yes, in the 24 and 25.
Okay. Has, have we expended all of it for 2024?
I believe we have. They usually collect all their funds.
Okay. I was just wondering because we, I went through one of the areas in my district, the Pentley Apartments. Those seniors over there in pretty bad shape, and each time we had a food drive, we always made an exception. We got volunteers to take the pallets over there to that particular deal, so I was just wondering if there was anything left, if we could possibly do something for that area or in the other areas during this time of year.
We do have our regular appropriation. I don't believe we provided funds for the additional food distribution. That's what we've done in the past. When you talk about the food distributions, there was something additional that the commission voted on.
So there is an addition or there is...
There, there is not. We didn't put an additional in.
Therefore, it wouldn't be, no time to do nothing prior to Christmas holiday.
I don't, you don't have another meeting. I don't, it would take, I think that, that program in the past has cost like 120 to 150,000. That's what it takes to do about, I think, 3,000 meals.
And then want everybody to know that each dollar that's contributed to them, they can, it goes 10 times with them what they can purchase, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have in reference to the administration's report. This communiquees wants us to all remember that National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day is Saturday, December the 24th. Congress on August the 23rd, 1994 passed a law that December the 7th of each year will be a day of commemoration and recognition of the attack on Pearl Harbor where we lost 2,403 service persons. And also, this was the impotence to get the United States of America involved in World War II. So this year, this Saturday, December the 7th, 2024, will be the 83rd anniversary. So let us not forget the sacrifices that those people made, those military persons made on behalf of our nation. Shine on Pines. I think I had given each of the commissioners a flyer on it. In other words, we are trying to bring West Caddo and West Shreveport into economic fruition and retain the viability that basically we hadn't lost, but it appears as though some people just had forgotten about us and written us off. We are asking all of the persons from Industrial Loop where Pine's Road starts north to Lakeshore Drive where it ends, the south side of Cross Lake, to light up their businesses and their homes and let everybody know that we are a strong and viable community, and we're looking for any and all residential and commercial development as possible, positive commercial and residential development. We just wanted to share that with everyone. Also, we have three new restaurant facilities that opened up that are fast food, and this was basically because of the instigation of interested community leaders and people within that area. We have a, we have a Starbucks Coffee, a Panda Express, and a Golden Chick that's opening on the corner of Greenwood Road and Pine's Road and I-20, very good, high-volume area. Last traffic study we did within that particular perimeter, about a two, two-and-a-half mile radius, we have almost a quarter of a million vehicles pass there a day. The commercial potential is exponential. The possibilities are strong, and I have never seen a grand opening of any facility of major of fast food as the Golden Chick has experienced. There, as long as they have been open, there's been traffic wrapped around for over 10 days in a line, day and night until they close. So the potential is there, and we're asking any and everybody that want to be, that's interested in coming to West Shreveport and West Caddo Parish, we are ready for you, commercially, residentially, small or large businesses. We are ready, willing, and we are able to make sure that you are successful once you come within that area. And we would do all within our powers to make sure that you are successful. But I want to make one thing clear, our people will not stand for any and everything. We want things that's going to come and appreciate and grow the area and make sure the property values increase and appreciate. My last item on here, I think they referred, some of my colleagues mentioned birthdays and so, so today I'm gonna, I'm gonna stroke my own back. Madam, would you put up that photo? I don't want that one. Is that garbage?
That's okay.
You got it?
It's gonna take us a minute to pull it up.
Okay, all right. It didn't? Okay. All right, we're in. Okay, all right. You'll see. You know, I always say we can, we can send a man to the moon and back. We can send unmanned spacecraft to Mars, make a soft landing, take pictures and data, but we can't fix an audio and a video system right here on Earth.
The "we" is a difference.
Well, you can skip over me if anyone else, and I'll come back to it once the picture photo come up.
Commissioner Jones?
No, not birthday. Not yet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to remind everyone about next Tuesday for the Parents Rock Cafe held by Community Cares. It's gonna be at Common Ground, which is at 6806 Southern Avenue. Phone number for contact is Ms. Kresha Bennett, and her number is 318-725-4267, extension 405. Again, there will be free food, door prizes, but childcare will not be provided this time. It's limited seating, so please RSVP with her as soon as possible. That's next Tuesday, at Common Ground on Southern Avenue, 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM, and we always have a good time at these. So I encourage those who have not been able to attend in the past, please try to make sure that you can get there. Also, bear with me here, I've got more than one communication. Don't forget about the toy drive at AB Palmer Park, hosted by Ms. Tanya Small. Her contact information, if you want to donate to that toy drive, is 318-200-8730, and that toy drive will be on December the 21st. The deadline to donate toys is Friday, December the 20th. The toy drive will begin at 12 and end at 3, and let's make sure that we get as many children out to that toy drive, especially if you have a knowledge of possibly their children who, you know, may not be receiving a gift this Christmas. Let's try to make sure that we can love on them because they certainly need that. And finally, I don't know if you all remember me mentioning, mentioning about losing a best friend to domestic violence, but her brother has, for the past 13 years, been hosting a 5K run and walk in her memory, and it's gonna be this Saturday, 3131 Arthur Ray T. Parkway. It is the 13th Annual 5K Run Walk in honor of Laquia Rawls. The rate is only $5 to sign up, so if you're a 5K person, this is for you. It's only gonna cost you $5. Registration starts at 8:30, and the race will begin at 9:00 AM. Even if you're not going to participate, please, I ask, you know, if you can, donate $5 or more to this cause. He and I have always been close because we were church members, and his sister and I ran trade together, but both of us lost our siblings to tragic, to gun violence. And so we've definitely bonded even closer from that. And so I'm asking you, he's a, he's a police officer, a great young man, and all he wants to do is to bring more awareness about domestic violence, so what happened to his sister doesn't happen to anyone else. And so asking if you can to donate to that, or if you want to donate and run a walk, please make sure you do that. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I'm gonna skip ahead to Administrator Bryant. You're on the board.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I did have Ms. Dolores Hurst with the Alzheimer's Association who wants to give you an update about the Walk to End Alzheimer's.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Hurst.
Sorry, I just got in from Baton Rouge, so excuse me for being a little tardy, but I wanted to come in and issue an award today. We issued a challenge to the city of Shreveport on the 48 hours before our walk day, and it was a competition between Shreveport and Acadiana, which is Lafayette. So we needed you all to raise $4,800 in 48 hours, and you guys went above and beyond and raised $5,200 in 48 hours. So I wanted to come in and award you guys the Above and Beyond Award for your work, presented to the city of Shreveport for your performance. Above and beyond expectations for the Walk to End Alzheimer's, for the Walk to End Alzheimer's Louisiana Chapter on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Also, altogether, the city of Shreveport and Bossier raised sixty-five thousand dollars so far for the Walk to End Alzheimer's and our association. So we thank you so much for your hard work and the generosity of the citizens of Shreveport.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hurst. This happens to us all the time. We will accept the city of Shreveport's honor on their behalf and take the credit too.
Mr. Thomas with District Three, he was there in, in support of the walk. He has been an avid supporter. He has become a champion for, for the walk and he is, I'm gonna challenge him to join us next year and join our committee.
I volunteer.
And continue to be advocate with us.
Mr. President, I know she said city of Shreveport, but it's for the, it's for the entire Caddo Parish.
For the area of Shreveport.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
Thank you. So now we have, I think, Commissioner Epperson's picture ready to show. I hope it's really good.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, you are looking at Staff Sergeant Stephen D. Epperson, the youngest son of my three. On November the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, at Fort Eisenhower, Georgia, Staff Sergeant Epperson was awarded the Distinguished Graduate of Electronic Warfare Specialist Class and the Distinguished Leadership Graduate of the Advanced Leadership Course. These awards are earned based upon the NCO's academic average, superior military bearing, appearance, knowledge of technical and tactical skills, and outstanding performance of duty. Students that were in his class were from Germany, Korea, Hawaii, Alaska, and other military posts throughout the United States. Staff Sergeant Epperson is a student of the CCA Head Start Program, a graduate of Captain Treeve High School, National Honor Society, a graduate of Louisiana State University, Baton Rouge, where he studied abroad in Morocco. He is an active member of the Louisiana Army National Guard. Staff Sergeant Epperson is also an Iraqi war veteran. He served in Iraq in twenty twenty-one. Staff Sergeant Epperson is the youngest son of Caddo Parish Commissioner Ken Epperson Senior and Patricia Epperson. Commissioner Epperson states he is proud to say that all of my sons have served the military. Staff Sergeant Epperson is also a member of Phi Beta Sigma Incorporated fraternity. So I want to wag my, I want to tell you.
Please be sure to thank him for his service from all of us and congratulate him on his, it sounds like numerous awards. Commissioner Burrell, you're next on the board.
Alright. Number one was up there. Is Kevin Samuel here or someone from Animal Services?
Dr. Clark is here.
Oh, okay. I'm addressing, I'm addressing this, I'm addressing this because I've gotten three calls on it.
Rodesa?
It's not in my district.
Rodesa?
No, this is Elagoncon Trail.
Elagoncon, East Elagoncon?
The Flornoyes. You should be familiar with them. I think I talked to Victor about it. I believe it's in Victor's district, but since I've known him for some time and is representative and they, they keep calling me. But what I'm understanding is that they have a feud going on with, with the neighbors because their dog, dog get out and get into their yard, causing their dogs to bark. Then the police come, then I think the same people whose dog get into their yard call the police on them. And the police come out to give them the ticket. So I'm not sure what we can do with this, if anything, but I would love for you all to address this.
We, we've been out and cited the animal owners. When was the last time you got a call about it? It's just like a week or two ago?
Forty minutes ago.
Okay.
And they, they would have been down here, but they had a doctor's appointment.
Okay.
So hopefully you all can deal with it.
I'll, I'll look into it, take care.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Cuthrin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before you go, Travis, I would just like to thank you and your entire team. Monday through Friday, normally I try to walk. And the thing is, there's not a day that go by that I don't text either Travis or Calvin and they be on top of it each and every day. And I receive phone calls and texts from people in the community thanking you all for picking up all the animals, stray animals that you do and it's a warning to everybody out there, please, 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 if you see stray animals, call somebody. Call Animal Control, call your respective commissioner and go from there. Because the last thing we need is a child hurt, harmed, or killed, okay? And go from there. So again, I just want to publicly thank you all and your entire team.
Thank you.
Some of the things that's going on, seventh December at the River City Jubilee for the Ark Caddo Parish. Fourteenth December, between eight and eleven AM, Southern Hills is going to have a litter pickup. Fourteen December for the Bueller Safe Haven. At five thirty, I would be the guest speaker. And on nineteenth December for the Rotary Club over at LSUS, I will also be the guest speaker there at seven thirty, eight AM. So the thing is, again, even though we, this is our final meeting, I just want everybody to know that's under the sound of my voice. We as commissioners do not stop today. Our phones still ring. We still do what you all have elected us to do. So continue to give us a call, continue to do whatever you need to do. And I wish everybody, under the sound of my voice, Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I did want to share a few events. Once again, on December the thirteenth, at the Lakeside Recreation Center, there will be a Toys and Coats event starting at seven o'clock PM. If anyone would like to donate any toys or coats to the needy, the phone number to reach out is three one eight nine nine zero six four nine nine. Also, again, December the fourteenth, Shreveport Regional Arts Council will be hosting the biannual Christmas in the Sky. It's starting at six o'clock at Louisiana Downs. You can contact the Shreveport Regional Arts Council if you'd like to purchase tickets to that event. Please consider supporting them. This is their major fundraiser. Also, on tomorrow evening, December sixth, at Samstown Casino, the twenty twenty-four class of forty under forty will be revealed. Congratulations to them. I had the opportunity this year to serve as the chair of this event. YPI and the Greater Chamber highlights these individuals for the work that they do in their community. It's really, really great for Caddo Parish to retain these young professionals because these young professionals are the future of our parish and really proud of them. Also, on December the twentieth, the Twelfth Annual Senior Saints Christmas Celebration will be at Riverview Hall from nine to twelve. If anyone is interested in that, please come down. It's gonna be a great time. Those seniors are always overjoyed for this fellowship. Not only that, they get some really, really great gifts. And I know sometimes give some material to them, but you'd be surprised at how those fruit baskets really, really brighten their day. So if you get a chance to stop by, I invite all the commissioners to please join me down there. Once again, it's December the twentieth at Riverview Hall from nine to two. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Burrell, second time.
Thank you. I didn't finish my, my report, but on the animal services, I do want to commend them. Although that seemed to have been a complaint, but this is one in which there are accolades. They captured five dogs, some of them dangerous, on Boss Avenue in my district. Mr. Ernest Ariat called in. And I talked with Kevin and I'm sure Travis was involved in it. And they, they went out and captured five dogs that was terrorizing the neighborhood.
I bet they used tranquilizers.
Yes, they did. And, and they did it in short order. So I wanted to commend them on that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Alright, that's all the communiques. That brings us to President's Report. I'll make a short President's Report today. I think this might be my last President's Report. It's been a pleasure to work with you all this year and to lead these meetings. It has almost been a hundred percent polite and civil and very, very highly focused on the business of the parish, which I especially appreciate. And so I want to commend all of you for working hard and keeping your minds focused on parish business. And I also think that we've had partisanship at a relatively low level this year, especially considering that there was a national federal election going on. So I want to thank you and congratulate you all on your equanimity during this exciting year. And I also want to acknowledge publicly the lovely Christmas gifts that we've been given from Commissioner Lazarus and Commissioner Blake. Maybe there are more. But you're also gonna get a Christmas gift from me. It's the presidential Christmas gift. And I will spoil the surprise for you by telling you in advance. It is spicy pickled green beans from Michelle Nations, our deputy clerk. They're gonna be here, I don't, any minute, not today, but they'll be here for the rest of December pretty much, or you could pick them up in January. They're pickled, so not gonna go bad. And that's all, that's all I wanted to say. I, I salute you all and I appreciate your, your service. Thank you. Okay, next comes Section eleven, which is empty. And so now we'll have public hearing on ordinances. Mr. Clark.
The first item we have for our public hearing today is Ordinance sixty-four seventy-seven of twenty twenty-four. That is an ordinance to adopt Chapter two, Article five, Division four of the Parish Code of Ordinances relative to Parish contracts to provide for the payment of a living wage by contractors within the parish and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Would you like me to read all of these in open one hearing? Okay. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance sixty-five ten of twenty twenty-four. That's an ordinance to close and abandon an eighty-foot wide street dedication in Section twenty, Township twenty-one North, Range fourteen West, in the Parish of Caddo, and otherwise provide with respect thereto in District one. And the final item for the public hearing today is Ordinance sixty-five eleven of twenty twenty-four. That's an ordinance to increase the Caddo Parish portion of the salaries of constables and justices of the peace and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Okay, if you have anything to say for or against Ordinance sixty-four seventy-seven, sixty-five ten, or sixty-five eleven of twenty twenty-four, public hearing is now open. Please come forward and share your thoughts. Welcome, Ms. Glover.
John Glover, ninety-one hundred Walker Road, Apartment two seventeen, Shreveport seven eleven eighteen. Having been in the midst of conversations with regards to the public hearings you all have to consider today, I can attest and affirm that I am in agreement with them. I know that there have been some tweeting on some of the items, making it, making it just what we need it to be. You know, not leaving anything for us not to understand what your purpose and intent is. And for that, I truly thank you, the authors of those legislations. I want to extend, since I'm standing here and I didn't do the card, you all to have a happy New Year and God's will. We'll see each other at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. That appears to be everyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing. Therefore, public hearing is not closed. Alright, Section thirteen is empty, so we'll go on to the same ordinances for final passage.
First item being Ordinance sixty-four seventy-seven.
Would you read it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I thought there was a motion.
I sort of got started.
My apologies. Ordinance sixty-four seventy-seven of twenty twenty-four is an ordinance to adopt Chapter two, Article five, Division four.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gregory Young. Commissioner Gregory Young, seconded by Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a long time coming. I think this is an important step in ensuring the dignity of the least among us in our parish. I'd like to thank Administrator Bryant. I'd like to thank Attorney Frazier, Mr. Lawrence, Pacilippe, Mr. Weaver, who's our Public Works Director. They've committed a lot of effort into exploring this issue and to refining this issue. I also like to thank the members of the Economic Development Committee, those who have supported this initiative and also those who did not support this initiative because what you provided is an important perspective and vantage point from the community, from the community.
Can you hear me better now? I think you provided a significant vantage point from the community and I think that all of the points of view within this community should be recognized. And I hope that throughout this entire process, we've been able to provide some clarity about what this initiative is about. And if we haven't done a, a good a job as maybe we had hoped to, let me just offer some final thoughts. That the money that's being used to ensure that these particular citizens receive a living wage of fifteen dollars per hour, it's not money that comes from charity and it's not money that comes from, directly from business owners within our community. This money comes from the Caddo Parish Commission. And yes, in some, in some respects, I think you can think about it, how it does come from the community. But it comes from the community in a way that provides for human dignity. The dignity of a job. We just had the good people that arrived the other day from the United Way. And they talked about these individuals who are experiencing acute crisis in their lives. They don't have the necessary funds to pay for their bills. Very much of the, of the NGO, of the nonprofit funds that all of us provide, whether we, through our personal donations or through our church, or through taxpayers' money. All of, much of this, much of this support that we give these people in these dire straits wouldn't be necessary, wouldn't be necessary if they had a job, if they had a job paying living wages. And so that's, that's what we're trying to promote. We're not trying to put in additional burdens on our community. We're just taking funds that we already have and we're ensuring that these funds are promoting human dignity. And I would ask for all of, all of my fellow commissioners to support this initiative today through your vote. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gregory Young. Commissioner Atkins, you're next on the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to blurb the point. It's been debated a good bit already. But Commissioner Young, I'd like to thank you for your civility in leading the Economic Development Committee meetings and allowing all views and perspectives to be, to be spoken of and talked through. As many of you know, I'm, I'm opposed to this ordinance. I feel that it's, we're imposing the view of the commission upon privately-owned businesses that have the ability to negotiate their own contracts and wages with each of their employees. And I would rather leave that aspect to the open market and not impose our view upon those employers. Also feel that it will be increasing the cost to the taxpayers for the services that are contracted for by the parish. So for those reasons, I'll respectfully be opposing this position. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. I'll state my opinion about this matter as well. I think of myself as, at least attempting to be fiscally conservative. That's one of the reasons that I voted against raising my own pay last year. At that time, I did not fully appreciate what it would feel like to lose twenty percent of my purchasing power over the last four years, which was painful, but I sort of noticed it later. Costs of everything have gone up. And if we're going to survive, we've either got to bring costs down dramatically or we've got to start paying people more. I don't see any way to bring costs down dramatically. Normally, we give people raises in wages when costs go up. This ordinance will, will simply mean that the parish intends to pay people who work on parish property through a private company, through a private contract, fifteen dollars an hour or more. Those costs will be reflected in the contract prices that we negotiate. And the parish costs go up, food prices go up, wages also have to go up. There's not really any way around it and it's the only way I can see to raise, to be consistent and also raise the pay of the constables, which is coming up in two, two votes. So I'm gonna vote in favor of this because people need enough money to survive here. Alright, it looks like that's all of the discussion. We can vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, four in opposition, and one absent. That brings us now to consideration of Ordinance sixty-five ten of twenty twenty-four, which is an ordinance to close and abandon an eighty-foot wide street dedication in Section twenty-ten.
Got a motion from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Likes move to in Globo fourteen two, fourteen three, Globo and a doubt. Fourteen two, fourteen three, seventeen point one. 14-2, 14-3, 17.1, 18.1. And you want to... I'll go to the...
So let me...
I'll stop.
So you said 14.2, 14.3. Did you say 16?
16 is just for introduction.
This is an introduction. I see. Okay. So then we've got 17.1, the work session minutes, and the two special resolutions in Section 18?
No, he just said 18.1, I believe.
Okay, just to 18.1. Okay, great. All right, so...
Point of clarification.
Yes, Commissioner Burrell.
12.2 and 12.3, we have an address yet.
14.2.
I know.
Well, so we did the public hearing for Section 12 already.
Right. I know that we did that, but we didn't vote on it.
Well, the public hearing we don't vote on, we vote on the Section 14. They're the same ordinances in Section 14 for final passage. So we just voted on 14.1, now we're on 14.2?
But we just voted on 12.1.
We voted on 14.1. We introduced 12.1 for the public hearing.
Maybe it's on here because mine says 12.1 is 6477.
And 14.1 is also 6477. So the first one is for public hearing, and then in Section 14, they're for final passage.
Okay, we're good.
All right. So 14.2, 14.3.
14.4, 14.3, 17.1, which is the work session minutes, and 18.1, which is Resolution 80 of 2024.
You have a 14.4? Did you say 14.4?
14.4 is the end of the year appointments.
Oh, I see. Wait at the end. Okay, great.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why it's labeled like that. It should be 20.1.
I'll repeat it in one second.
At the end of the year appointments, you'd like to include that in the englobo? Is that what I'm understanding?
If everybody's okay with it, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So the motion is to englobo and adopt finally 14.2, 14.3, 14.4, which is wait at the end of our agenda, 17.1, and 18.1.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we do these individually.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? Okay. There's a motion from Commissioner Burrell to... A substitute motion to... Do you just want to do 14.2? Is that your motion?
Well, my motion is for us to break apart, just as we voted on 12.1, that we are allowed to... What you said, 14.1. 14.1, that we are allowed to do these individually.
Okay. So there's a substitute motion contrary to the englobo?
So is that substitute motion?
Usually we just have the englobo mover exempt thing.
The original motion was to englobo.
Englobo.
And adopt those five items. Yeah, I believe it's five items. So the substitute motion is to instead just take up the first item?
That would be fine.
Which one is the child on one?
I think there's... I still have questions on...
Is it okay to just go one by one, Commissioner Jones?
If I want to do.
All right, let's try to do it. We'll try to do it fast. Okay, so now we're on 14.2. An ordinance to close and abandon an 80-foot-wide street dedication in Section 20 Township 21 North Range 14 West in the Parish of Caddo and to otherwise provide with respect thereto from District 1. Is there a motion about this item? Okay. Motion from Commissioner Burrell, second from Commissioner Atkins.
I should defer to Commissioner Crackman.
Well, it's moving.
No opposition.
No opposition. Okay, let's vote. All right, that passes.
That motion is adopted with 11 in support, none in opposition. The next item, 14.3, Ordinance 6511 of 2024, is an ordinance to increase the Caddo Parish portion of the salaries of constables and justices of the peace and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner Cothran?
No, I got a question.
Okay, well, let's wait. Okay, so there's a motion from Commissioner Crackman, second from Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Crackman, would you like to speak about this?
I'll save it.
Okay. Commissioner Cothran, you raised your hand. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify between because I know there's been a couple of things about the constables. And the thing is, again, we're just actually talking about the, I think, additional $50 to go with the salaries that they are receiving at this particular time. Am I correct? Oh, it's not. Which one is this?
Administrator Brian, please clarify this for us.
Yes, sir. You all have already voted on for the litter part of it, to raise that from $40 an hour to $50 an hour. They only get that if they actually work and issue citations. This particular ordinance is for their salary that they receive every month for doing their normal duties, and it will go up by $100 a month. So they will go from... They'll start receiving $345, I think.
$325.
$325. Our portion would go from $225 to $325.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Burrell, you have a question?
I do have a question on this one, Mr. Chairman. Since we had all that discussion on 14.1 and dealing with a living wage, my question to the administration, does the existing salary for the constables now constitute a living wage?
I wouldn't say that it constitutes a living wage, but these particular positions aren't meant to be the positions to pay the bills and your ongoing cost of... This is a part-time position that they decide to run for office. It's actually an elected position that they're very aware of what the salary is when they decide to take on these additional duties in addition to what their normal jobs may be. This is our elected positions that the commission is just considering raising the pay for.
So there is no way of determining whether or not they're actually getting a living wage based upon what they're making?
Well, the fact that it's not even $500 a month, I wouldn't think that that would be... If it was based on a full-time, that wouldn't necessarily be a living wage.
I guess I'm looking at it in conjunction with those that are not making living wage in 14.1. And if we are adjusting salaries or payments, then there would be some correlation between the two.
My understanding of this is that it's sort of like being a commissioner. This is a part-time job. If you're trying to pay all your bills with this job, you're not going to...
I know what a constable does. I know what a constable does, and I know that they are not paid like a peace officer or what have you. I'm very much aware of that. But I am concerned about whether or not many of our employees that are making below... Well, making minimum wage, that we cannot support them, but we can support these, although it's part-time. I'm sure that they're doing something else in their business. I'm sure they're doing something else, have some other line of business. That's okay. I needed that clarification, Mr. Chair.
Now, just for clarifications, Commissioners, you did raise all parish employees to $15 now. So we did do that for all parish employees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President, can I ask you a question? Can I direct a question to you about this?
Sure. Commissioner Gregory Young.
The... Okay. These are elected officials, am I correct?
Yes. Constables are elected officials.
The way it usually works... The way it normally works is that elected officials, when they run for office, there are salaries that are specific to those positions. And in other words, we're all in place, right? So we couldn't vote ourselves to get a raise in January. Is that accurate?
That's correct. You can only do it for the upcoming term.
For the next term?
Right.
Because what would be the effect of that? Would it not be that...
You could just pay yourself more otherwise.
Well, and there are people out there that say, hey, if I had known they were going to have it this good, I may have contested for that position. And that kind of the rationale that we don't want to benefit ourselves while we have the power to?
I think there are multiple rationales, and that's one of them.
But that would be one of them?
Can I offer a point of clarification?
Sure, Commissioner Jones.
Constables can't vote for themselves a raise. And because we're a home rule charter, we have... That puts a stipulation on us to not be able to take an effective raise during our current term, which means if we vote for ourselves a raise, then the next term will be effective for that term. But because constables are not under the same home rule charter as we are, they're not in a position where they can vote for themselves a raise. So they're depending upon us to do that for them.
Right. The constables also don't have access to a budget like we do.
Right. I was just trying to extend...
Yes.
Just indulge me. I'm just trying to extend a broader understanding about this. If it's not necessarily the letter of the law, it's kind of like the spirit that when you run for an office, you know what the salary is, right? And so if you're really going to be fair about it, you would say that it would impact the next group that comes in in that office. That's just one way to think about it. That doesn't mean how I'm going to vote. Again, I'm only just trying to expand my understanding about the position. Thank you, Mr. President, for your indulgence.
Sure, there is one other distinction.
If I may, Mr. Chair, my clarification was not, you know, in any way to minimize what Commissioner Young was saying. I just want to make sure that the constituents and those who are sitting here with us understand the difference in when we try to vote for a raise for the commission versus situation with the constables, just to make sure that everybody who doesn't understand the conversation has clarity.
Right. The constables themselves do not have the authority to determine their salaries. We have the authority to determine our portion of their salaries. Okay. Commissioner Atkins, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like there's been some confusion on why some of us may have voted against imposing wages on... Imposing required wages on contractors versus being supportive of increased wages for constables. And I'll just remind the body that in the case of Caddo Parish employees that for whom we are at least partially responsible for through the administration, you know, that's our responsibility. We have direct impact on that, direct influence on that. And the wages for the constables, we have a direct role in that. And although I respect some people may see it differently, to me, it's different when the employees are under the employment of someone else and we impose a rule that requires someone else to change the way they compensate their employees. So to me, that's the difference. And that's why I voted against the living wage requirement for contractors, but I'll be voting in support of the constables that are part of the Caddo Parish compensation structure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. It looks like that's all the discussion. Let's vote. Commissioner Crackman?
Yes, it's pretty cut and dry. And it is separate and apart from the $50 an hour thing for litter and blight abatement, which I believe Attorney Bernstein is setting them up a course on how to adjudicate the litter and blight issues. There was a lot of confusion with the agreement that the parish had made for them in 2023. And so a lot of the details of that are still being ironed out. This being separate and apart is the first time that this has been visited in 16 years. So it has been the same rate for 16 years. Yes, they signed up, you know, for that rate. I think it's time that we appreciate them. And $100 a month seems pretty minimal. I wish we could do more, honestly. But I think this is pretty low-hanging fruit for all of us to appreciate, you know, some peace officers. That's been long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman.
And if the gentleman may... We yield just for one second. I'd just like one second. I just want you to know that I'm voting for the measure.
Please address the chair.
I'm voting for the measure. I'm supporting the measure. I'd just like to say that my pocket can't tell where the money comes from. It doesn't matter. For the people who need the money, they could care less where it comes from. And that's what I'm trying to impact. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Okay, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven... I mean, I'm sorry, with 10 in support, one in opposition, and one absent. And that brings us now to...
Section 16.
Let's see. 16, which is an ordinance for introduction, and it is Ordinance 6512 of 2024. That's an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of the public dedication for Wells Island Road located in Section 13 Township 18 North Range 14 West in the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto. And that is in District 3. That brings us now to Section 17, where 17.1 is to consider adopting the work session minutes from your December 2nd meeting. Those are attached.
Motion from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion? We can vote.
I'd like to move to englobo 17.1 and 18.1.
All right. The motion is now to englobo and adopt 17.1 and 18.1.
Give us just a second to make sure that we've recorded that motion correctly. And it does pass with 11 in support and one absent, none in opposition. And that brings us now to Resolution 81 of 2024, which is a resolution strongly urging and requesting AEP SWEPCO to allow an extension through its property of the public road, giving access to its property in Resilient Technology Park.
There's a motion from Commissioner Epperson, second from Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Epperson?
Postpone this item until the first meeting in January.
Okay. Before we vote, I would like to ask Mr. Corbin to come up and speak to us all the same, even though it is a motion to postpone, because this is the second time he's come here to speak about this. And I asked him to come back today when we didn't hear him on Monday. Mr. Corbin, please come and speak to us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you twice in the same week. On November 21st, each of you received a letter from me providing an update of our facility that's under construction and nearing completion in West Shreveport. You also, in that letter, got some clarifications to some comments that were made during a work session, a previous work session to November 21st. So we wanted to clarify some things that were stated about the street being private, which it's not, and what the design of the street is. Also, you received a copy of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement that accepted various agencies' funds to help make this project happen, bring it to fruition. What in that Cooperative Endeavor Agreement is between the state of Louisiana, Parish of Caddo, city of Shreveport, and AEP Southwestern Transmission. So I think most of you had a chance to read those documents because there was a read receipt attached to it. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them today. I'll stop there.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Corbin? Commissioner Burrell?
I do have one. Just to be explicitly clear, the road is public from what I read. Considered public.
It is a dedicated city street.
It's a public street?
Open to the public.
Okay, so it's not private?
It's not private.
Okay. And because that is the case, is there any stipulation that another public road cannot be tied into it? That... I did not read that in your document specifically.
I don't know if you visited the site or not, but Resilient Way is purposely designed, and it was from the get-go to provide access to Resilient Technology Park. AEP's facility is in the back northwest corner. There are hundreds of acres available for future development. And this roadway was designed from the start to provide access to economic development in the rest of the acreage in there. Our facility was designed specifically to accommodate the way the road was designed for our security checkpoints, parking, and other secure access. So I would encourage you, if you've not gone out to the site, to go and access that public street to the point that it deadens and, and see what the design is and why it was designed that way.
Well, I understand, I understand the explanation, Mr. Corbin, about, about the design of it. But based upon the documents that you sent us, did it, in the documents, did it state where another road cannot be tied into this public road?
I can't speak for the landowner who owns the technology park, and, and I won't speak for the landowner. But I will tell the body, as I have Commissioner Epperson in a previous meeting, that we would be opposed, and I believe anyone who's considering a project at Resilient Technology Park would be opposed to a through street. As I mentioned in my letter, there are, there is existing right of way to the east that was originally intended for a, an extension of Burcoons Industrial Loop. And, and if there is interest in a through street between Buncombe Road, or Jefferson Page Road, rather, and Greenwood Road, that that right of way be revisited. There are ongoing entry, ongoing projects looking at the entire acreage of Resilient Technology Park. I feel strongly, because of the interest in it, that that is gonna happen. I can't tell you when it's gonna happen, but it won't be in the distant future.
Final question. It would not be considered a secured site? First of all, because of the public road into it? Given the fact you, you call it a technology park, I guess in these days, now with, with so much security out there, this would not be considered a secured site? You will probably have companies that will come in, in there where, where there is no so set security.
I can't speak, I can't speak for potential projects that may go on the site. I can speak for our facility.
Is that a secure facility?
And it is a secure facility. Multiple checkpoints before you ever access the building. And the work that goes on in there is not work, nor would we have located it in Caddo Parish if there was consideration of a through street running within feet of the building.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Corbin, how you doing?
Good.
Is it Corbett?
Corbin.
Corbin. Sorry about that. I like butchering people's names. I feel a certain kind of way when people wanna call me Jones. Gregory Jones. You're employed by AEP. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How long have you been employed? I know I used to see you on the City Council many years ago.
I think about six years.
Six years? Okay. Congratulations. Now, you're not here to represent the interests of any other private company or any other developer that may be interested in locating in the area, are you?
I'm here to provide information to questions that are asked about our facility and why we are in opposition to a through street.
Right. But just to be clear, you're not here to represent anyone else's interests except for those.
That's correct.
Of AEP.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Fraser, are you familiar with this, this particular project and the email that Mr. Corbin sent out to everybody?
I am not familiar with Mr. Corbin's email. I was requested, I believe at the last meeting, to send you copies of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement. So I'm familiar with my email, but not his.
Well, let me just say to this, to your knowledge, to the best of your knowledge, did we waive any rights that the parish would otherwise have in that area that would prevent us from using any adjacent property for the public use? Do you know, we waived any right to like go around their facility with a road and then meet up on the other side? Did we waive such rights? Are you knowledgeable about it? It sounds like, it sounds like there's a belief, and I'm not suggesting he's faulting these ideas. He may be or may not, but that's not my position here. It seems like there's an assertion here that the parish don't have any rights in that area to do anything except for what's already been done. Do you know, do you have any knowledge that we waived any rights?
Commissioner, I honestly, I don't think it's that cut and dried. I think there are certain things that you could be done, that could be done, that may be interpreted as possibly viola, violations of the agreements that we signed. As far as anything that is public around that area, the public, including this body, have rights to that, that is public around that area. With regard to anything that is not public property already, you can only get the rights, you can legally take or that the private property owner extends.
Well, I'm just trying to be clear. We, we haven't put ourselves in the position where we couldn't invoke eminent domain and procure private property in relative proximity to AEP. Not saying that whether or not it's prudent. I'm not, I'm not trying to go there. It may not be a feasible way for us to proceed, okay? I'm just saying that, I just want to be clear that we haven't waived any rights here to move forward in a way that we, we deem necessary in the public's interest.
I would actually have to know how you intended to move forward and take a look at that agreement before I can responsibly answer that question.
Well, I'm just asking what your knowledge is at this point. You're not aware that we have waived any rights?
No, I am not aware.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you. I'll just observe that if we made an agreement with another group, we have waived the right to violate that agreement. So whatever is in the agreement, we're not supposed to violate or we'll, we could be taken to task by a court. Okay. Commissioner Atkins, you're next on the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not qualified to interpret the law on this matter, but I think we need to think about the intent of the agreement. Most agreements, you can find a way around it if you so desire, but what was the intent? And in my, in my view, when we were all out there celebrating this SWEPCO facility being built out there, the intent was that it was gonna be built at a secure technology park. And so although there are, you know, we perhaps have the legal right to do things or could do things to, to change the, the layout of that facility. The big question to me is, should we do those things? And in my mind, we have a, an understi, at the time that the project was initiated, we had an understanding, we, the parish, had an understanding with AEP SWEPCO about what that technology park was gonna look like in the future. And in my mind, we should abide by that understanding. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Burrell?
I just want to have one, one comment on intent. After spending 14 years at the legislature, you don't know the intent unless you know the conversation at the time in which the agreement was done. Intent is relative. And we need to keep that in mind too, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gregory Young, second time.
I would just like to make sure that this observation is part of the record. I did go out to the, to see the property today. So thank you for the invitation. But one of my very distinguished colleagues invited me to go on a ride alone, and I was happy to view this property. I would just like to say that even though I am a certified paralegal by the Great Southern University in Baton Rouge, that does not make me a lawyer. I'm not here to give any legal opinion about anything. And I did not export a good attorney for a legal opinion. I was just curious as to, based on her knowledge, whether or not she was privy to any waiving of rights on behalf of the parish. And anyone, I don't think, I think, I think the attorney Fraser is the only attorney in the room and a lawyer. We have another, oh, well, no, there's a difference between a lawyer and an attorney. And a lawyer is a person, a lawyer is a person that has received a law degree from a duly, a duly accredited university. An attorney is someone who is, has the same degree, but they have passed the bar exam, okay, of a particular state. So she's the only attorney in the room. And anybody else's opinion just lacks, lacks credibility. Is it, who, who else? Oh, okay, there goes another.
I'm gonna call us, I'm gonna call us back to order now.
Hey, we got more lawyers. Thank you.
I'm calling us back to order now. Let's keep the conversation germane, please.
No, no, well, that, that's okay.
Please.
Yes, but a lot of times, conversations go all kinds of ways throughout this.
Commissioner Gregory Young, please, please keep it, please keep it focused on the topic.
Mr. Young, you need to, today is the last day for you to be trying to police me, okay? All right.
Commissioner Gregory Young, I call you to order. Please conclude your comments.
Oh, I thought when you started speaking, I was through.
Okay. All right. I asked you to conclude your comments. If you concluded, that's fine. Commissioner Crackman, you're next on the board.
Yes, a motion of postponement, so I'll keep it real brief. Mr. Corbin, in, in the agreement, did, did y'all make, did AEP make any kind of request for any kind of tax abatement or anything special like that?
We did not.
So more or less, all that was requested for was a cooperative endeavor between us and the city to make this essentially a driveway to the park.
And the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement further clarifies city funds and additional AEP funds built the street, and the parish funds did the water and sewer infrastructure.
And how many folks are employed over there?
I think eventually there will be, referenced it in my letter, and I think it is greater than 30.
Greater than 30?
And with additional potential.
Okay, so you put up a facility that could potentially create up to 30 jobs. You didn't ask for any tax break, and all you want is security. That's, that seems fair to me. And, you know, if this is postponed and comes back in January and passes, you know, District 1 would be more than happy to have this facility. And we'd give you your privacy. But the way I see it is, a request was made for a driveway. A request was made for a driveway for y'all to build a facility. You didn't ask for much else other than that. Everybody goes to the ribbon cutting and is happy. But now, all of a sudden, we want a through road. That seems inappropriate to me personally. But we'll see how it pans out in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Jones?
Call for the question.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. The question, we'll now vote on call for the question.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. I appreciate your patience.
Okay, we're now voting on the call for the question. And Commissioner Jones?
I'll be.
No problem. Thank you. And that carries with 11 in support, none in opposition. So we'll now vote.
All right. Now we'll vote on the motion to postpone.
And that motion carries with nine in support, two in opposition, and one absent. And brings us to.
Section 20.
New business, end of the year appointments.
All right. Is there a motion regarding end of the year appointments?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Jones moves, second by Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, sir.
Commissioner Atkins, would you like to speak?
No, sir.
Commissioner Epperson, you're on the board.
The exception from this would be the vacant, one vacant position, right? There's one vacant position.
Sewer District Number 8.
Right. That's all I have.
All right.
I'm working on that.
Okay. Looks like, looks like there's some extra on our board. There's no motion to amend. Is that correct? Commissioner Catherine, are you on the board?
Yeah. My only question was in relations to this. Did we ever get the transcripts, bios, whatever we were supposed to get it, for each and every one of those? Because I never saw it.
Mr. Clerk?
Letter of intent.
Did we get communications, letters of intent, or anything from these folks?
We do. We have a number of them attached on the agenda. If they're not showing, you may want to refresh your agenda, and it will show. They're continually coming in, so we still, even during the meeting today, have received a few more, and we'll continue uploading those. But we did hear from most everyone. If not in writing, several people called and, you know, expressed interest and, and said that they would be following up with something in writing. So we did get a good response from everybody.
I see 11 responses and nine non-responses, so far. Not including the vacancy.
Well, you, you know, the thing is again, and I'm not gonna belabor this. If we ask information, we should receive information. Or we shouldn't ask for the information and just let them do whatever they choose to do. Because the thing is, is I understand it right now. We asked for whatever, the letter of intent, whatever you choose to call it. And like I said, I haven't seen it, you know, yet. It might not affect my district per se, but I would like to see who and what, and where, and why. And to my knowledge, maybe some people have seen it. I know I have.
Well, so there are 11 responses that are linked on our agenda now. And I believe asking for a letter of intent for reappointments is a brand new.
Yes, it's not something that's been asked of them in the past. Many of these people are retired and have long been retired. They don't have prepared resumes. They, you know, most of them sent just a note or a letter expressing interest in continuing to serve. Some of these people have served 30, 40 years on these boards. And this may have been the first time they've been asked for something. So they, they were happy to comply, but, but we are still in the process of receiving some of those. So it was a, you know, a new request for them, but they're happy to do it. But we haven't received them all yet. We are, like I said, we have received at least two during the course of these meetings. So they're still coming in.
Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm gonna just propose that we go ahead and move forward with, with the approvals and let the clerk continue to work on collecting this information, and then we can get up to speed later. And if we need to make some adjustments, we can in 2025. It's just, it wasn't a formal motion, but maybe we can all move forward.
Well, that's, that's in agreement with the motion on the table. So let's vote.
And that motion carries with 10 in support, one in opposition, and one absent.
Okay. Communicates and reports second time. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to share that in District, in my District, District 8, we have a new gym that has opened up, and it's in the Southfield Shopping Center in the old Labels Building, and it's called Kids Gym. And it's a really exciting gym that is the first in Northwest Louisiana. It's an all-inclusive gym for children that have all needs, sensory needs. And it's a really incredible site. So if you have an opportunity, Saturday is the grand opening. Stop by. I also want to welcome into my district Silver Star Restaurant and to the same, well, I guess it's a shopping center right next door to the Southfield Center. And I also want to thank the Ag Center for having lunch. It was my first time to attend the facility, and they did a home-cooked meal, and they actually served us. And I thought that was pretty incredible. In this day and age, people typically just cater, and so that was really lovely. And they offered us to take home tomatoes that they actually grow in their greenhouse. I love fresh vegetables, and I grew up eating fresh tomatoes sliced on the table as long as we had them. And so I was happy to take some home. And this morning, as I was running out the door to work, my husband said, where did you get those incredible tomatoes? They look fresh out of a garden. And so I just wanted to say thank you again to the Ag Center. And then also, I'd like to announce that the, this Sunday, the Independence, they're going to announce who's gonna be the teams playing at the Independence Bowl. So I wish everybody a wonderful Christmas and happy holidays. And I want to say it's been a great year, and thank you for being president and wish Stormy Gage, I could thank her, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Happy holidays to you. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did just want to say once again, congratulations to Commissioner Stormy Gage. I did just want to say once again, congratulations to Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts. In her absence today, she is being sworn in as the Region Four Representative for the Police Jury, and that's why she's not here with us. I also want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to the citizens of Caddo Parish, to my colleagues. I've really enjoyed serving with you all this year. Congratulations, Commissioner, Mr. President, on completing a year of service as a president, and I look forward to our continued leadership next year. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy holidays.
Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Epperson.
I just want to emphasize again, and I'm just not talking out of what I've seen, I'm talking out of experience. My group volunteers with Grace Point Church of the Nazarens Food Distribution Program each month. My American Legion post donated to the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana this year, and my church, and I know the needs that are in existence within some of these areas as far as food is concerned. Of course, I work with Brookshire also out there, but I just would, I guess I could, I could probably call Ms. Merrick and see if they have anything that they could do for those needs of those people that, that I've addressed, they can do that individually. I know we don't, nothing that we have, but I'm going to just try to call her, maybe they got something down there.
Yes, Commissioner, we can reach out to the Food Bank and see what they may have or what any additional it could take. We can reach out to Ms. Merrick.
Because we certainly have been there for them. I think memory served me right. I think we got a three-figure, over $300,000 we did at one point in time, didn't we? We had a pretty large distribution to them a while back, some years back. But anyway,
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm saying, see if we can just scrape the bottom of the pan now, maybe something left over we can share.
Yes, sir.
What you call it, two fish in five loaves, maybe it'll go.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to wish all of our Caddo Parish citizens a happy and safe holiday season, also our staff, as well as our fellow Commissioners, and to you, Mr. President, now you know what it's like to herd cats. So congratulations.
Not exactly cat. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to follow up on Commissioner Burrell's. Thank you to all of you around the horseshoe, both Commissioners and staff, and everybody in the audience that helps so much. All of our Caddo Parish staff is, is so responsive and helpful, so we appreciate you all for that. So thank you and Merry Christmas, and, Mr. President, thank you for your service this year. I know it takes extra effort as a service president, we appreciate you, you did a nice job this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Crackman.
Yeah, I'd like to cordially invite everyone to Earl G. Williams tomorrow, I mean, excuse me, Saturday, for the Christmas on Caddo, I forget which year it is. They've been doing it for many years, but anyway, the festivities start at 1:00 PM, and the fireworks display starts at 6:30 PM. Lot of vendors, a lot of crafts for kids. I do believe the Fat Man will be there, that's not me, but it should be a blast, and I hope everybody would, would pay us a visit up there. It's right up the road from my house, I usually watch the fireworks from home, so please come out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Gregory Young.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to salute, you know, the efforts that you put forward this year, and I just want to make sure that it's clear to everybody who's listening, here present and beyond, that I have no personal animosity toward Commissioner John Paul, I think he's done a fine job, it's just that sometimes certain personalities clash, and he and I, we've had our clashes, but I want to, I want to be sure to mention this, that much of what I've been able to accomplish this year in economic development, I owe to Commissioner John Paul, because he appointed me to this committee, so don't nobody get it twisted, you know? I love, I love my brother, and I believe, I believe he feels the same way about me. Again, just sometimes personalities clash, but we've been able to make some beauty, and I really do appreciate you for that, and I wish you a Merry Christmas and a happiest of New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gregory Young. I'll conclude also by saying that I am very impressed with the amount of work that Commissioner Young has done on the Economic Development Committee. He's done innovative things, they have not got unanimous support, but many of them have passed, and I think will be improvements for the lives of the people of Caddo. I also want to salute Animal Services Chair Victor Thomas, who did a bang-up job in what is very often the hardest committee, so way to go. All of our other committee heads, I think pretty much everybody's in charge of a committee, everyone's done a great job. Nobody has lit anything on fire, which is rule number one. So thank you to all of you, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy and Safe New Year. We'll see you in 2025. Is there any motion to adjourn? Oh, there's Citizens' Comments later rivals? No? Okay. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Oh, my gosh.